Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August 5th City Council meeting. Thank each and every one of you for coming tonight. Hopefully, our agenda will not last too long into the evening, but we will discuss the items in the entirety they need to be discussed. I would ask if you have a cellphone, if you would maybe silence your cellphone or turn it on vibrate or something, don't mind you ringing, but please excuse yourself in the event it does, and go outside and maybe take care of that conversation. I would like to ask you at this moment, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess as all cities and counties and across the nation are meeting this evening and different events, we should just stop and pause for a moment to remember those whom have had a terrible day and a half, two days, in El Paso and Dayton, and any of us who believe in the Lord, we believe that Jesus is with all of them and their families, and we just ask that they be taken care of because it's unbelievable what they're probably going through today. I'd also like to remind the council that we have an absence here tonight, former mayor Bill Lamline, he's in Louisville Hospital awaiting, I believe, a triple or quadruple bypass tomorrow. He's stable today and everything's okay, but I got a message from Valerie, his daughter today, said that the procedure is planned for 3:45 tomorrow afternoon, so we would ask you to keep Bill in your prayers and remember him that he has a speedy and healthy At this meantime, I'd like to have Stephanie call the row and as we begin this council meeting.
Ray?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Andrea?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Elsie?
Here.
We have seven present, I would like to call the meeting to order. Okay, tonight you have your agenda before you. I would always ask that any council person who would like to ask that the agenda be amended, an item placed on the agenda or deleted for any reason, at this time I will ask that we have a motion to approve our agenda in its present form, or is there any corrections or additions on any item?
Motion to approve agenda is written.
A motion by Leslie Wright to approve, second by Elsie Carter, any discussion on the motion? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, you have in your pockets the minutes from a special called meeting on July the 8th, it was a special meeting, you have received those minutes in your pockets as of last Thursday. I would ask that we dispense with the reading of those minutes unless the council would like for them to be read tonight, and if you're okay with the minutes in their present form, I'd entertain a motion that they be approved as well.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from July the 8th, 2019, as you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Debbie Pollard, second by Leslie Wright, any discussion on the motion? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. You have tonight your payables for the month of June and July. Heather Woodcox is here tonight, our payables account employee here, she's here to answer any questions, and because of accounting procedures, we have bills in the pack tonight for not only June but July as well, so if anyone has a question about any of the payables at this time, we will entertain those questions. And please take your time to look at them, and if anyone has a question, either myself, Stephanie, or Heather will try to answer those for you.
I actually, I do. A resident had messaged me and asked if their, what monies the came from for the Oldham County day out at the golf course, and I noticed a lot of them say miscellaneous, and then there was a reimbursement to, or it was special appropriations, and then there was one for miscellaneous, for Joe for getting all the food, and I just wanted to clarify for the person who had asked me exactly where that miscellaneous came from, was it still under special appropriations, or was it your discretionary fund, or?
Now, where it came from, myself, six or seven of us sit on the Raymond Wilborn Foundation Board, if you know, if you're familiar with that, we each sit on the board, and we're entitled to so much money a year, and myself, Earl Hedgepath, and Blake Hazelton each gave $500 each from the Raymond Wilborn Foundation to pay for all of that event that day, so it didn't come out of actual tax dollars. The payables you see were the items that were encumbered, that took to pay for that day's worth of events, we probably had a little bit of money left over, but still, we're waiting for all the bills to be finalized, and that's where the money actually came from, $1,500 a program, program by us three guys that sit on that board.
Okay, great, I just, I did not want to reply and have any misinformation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any other questions about any of the payables?
I actually have another question, and I'm not sure if this would be more of a committee question or not, but I'll go ahead and bring it up since it is on the payables. The payments to the pond lady out at Wilborn Park, I was just kind of wondering, I popped out there today, oh, sorry, I popped out there today, and I had actually talked to a couple of the citizens and to see if they've noticed anything different, and I know that that's kind of been an ongoing struggle with that park being as, or the pond being as shallow as it is and whatnot to try to keep it together, and I was just wondering if anybody might be able to share with me, I guess, kind of what she's doing, because they've not noticed a difference, so I just kind of wanted to follow up on them to, on that to see if there's, what's going on exactly.
Leslie, we had a park board meeting a few minutes ago.
I was gonna say, I'd be glad too, but we have three or four park board members here, and they just left the park.
We just came from there, and eventually, we will have to invest about a half million, four million, I think it was, to drudge the whole, get all the sludge out, but she, like, I drive through there all the time, and if I see it bad, then I'll call up and tell Stephanie Becker, Heather, someone, and then they'll contact her, she doesn't go there every day to see, but it looks, I mean, 100% better than it did, so that's what's going on there. She does go, and, but it's at our call, so isn't that right, Joe?
Evidently, if they don't see any difference, they didn't see it when all the algae was on the pond, and when I was in the office and I was getting calls every day and wanting samples from being tested, and this afternoon, the lakes look better than they've ever looked. There's not a bit of algae anywhere, so the pond lady has definitely done her job.
Okay.
And I know Blake Hazelton, Chairman of the Park Board, he questioned her or something, and she said, "Well, I don't come out until you call me," and so the lakes look better than they've looked in a long time right now, compared to what they were when all of the people in Washington Manor, Washington Circle was calling me, and the algae was thick on it, you couldn't even see the water, so they're, to me, they're just beautiful right now, so there's a big difference in them.
Okay, good, good, fantastic, I just kind of wanted to follow up on that and check it out.
I would ask whoever it was to please go down there and look at the park as it is now, because it's beautiful, it's wonderful, we have wonderful parks here in the city, and that is really exemplary, she needs to go look at it, whoever it is.
I was just down there about two hours ago.
Okay. Rice cut, everything.
While we're discussing the parks too, I might want to mention to Cory, Public Works at the Park Board this afternoon at the meeting, couldn't compliment enough on how all the parks are kept by Public Works, and so pass it on to Cory, and he can pass it on to his guys, and they just went on and on and on, how beautiful the parks have been kept, so thank you, Cory.
What I know about it as well, and thank you all for your report, but there was a $7,500 contractual agreement between the Parks Board and a company called the Pond Lady to actually have a plan of action on those lakes down there, and for the $7,500, she was to watch these lakes every day, every week, every month, whatever it took to go out into the lakes with different types of, you know, pesticides, or whatever it takes to work on the algies and things like that, so she's out there, or he's out there in boats occasionally, doing things to the lake, so it was a contract for $7,500, and I agree with all of you all, I was down there a week or so ago, and there was just very little remnants of any algae in either lake, so it's really doing its job down there. So we're still in the payable section of our agenda, do we have any more questions on our payables at this time?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay, the motion made by Ms. Carter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie Pollard, I would like to clarify something Debbie said, she's, I think she said might take four million to correct those lakes, I've heard four or 500,000 to maybe dredge one, but I don't want to alarm anybody, we may be spending $4 million down there too.
That's horrible.
Okay, so anyway, but we do have a motion on a second to approve the payables, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, as well in your pocket tonight, you have all your financials, a continuation of where we are within the beginning of our new fiscal year, I'll be welcome to try to answer or entertain any discussion on any of this report. In addition to that, you have all of our bank accounts, our ending balances as of 31 of 2019. Stephanie Cooper would be trying to help you out on any questions you might have there, but we still haven't, I'm still not ready to present a year end to the City Council on how we did last fiscal year, but I think it's going to be a very good year for our city, so hopefully next meeting I'll have a fine conclusion on how we ended our last fiscal year. We're starting off well with our new year, with our receipts and also expenditures, so does anyone have any further questions on any part of our financials that you were given to last Thursday? If you do, that's fine, I mean, there's a lot of information there, but you're always welcome to try to ask a question here at this time.
I'll make a motion, we approve the financials.
A motion made by Ms. Elsie Carter, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andrea Essen Price, any discussion on the motion and the second? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we always offer anyone in the community the opportunity to come forward and speak during public comment time of this meeting, we sort of have a standard where we would always welcome and give everyone four minutes to speak to the City Council on basically any subject matter, we would ask you not to be personally in your attacks on anyone, and at our discretion of the council, if we wish to extend your time over the four minutes, we have the ability to extend it if the council needs more time to understand your issue. What we do ask you to do for us is just give us your name, state your address, and then you're welcome to speak to the City Council. Good evening.
Priscilla Henkel. 2009 South Third Avenue, Lagrange.
Priscilla Henkel, and yes, ma'am.
Diane Booker, 206 South Second Street.
Okay, Diane Booker, you've really got to lean over and speak, we're trying to work on that speaker system, but you're really going to have to lean over there for us, ladies, and make sure everyone in the audience can hear you, so go right ahead.
My concern is the water issue, ever since the City Group has been built, water floods down there on South Third Avenue, I've got some pictures, and I've got a video of how high the water rises, and also due to that, it makes like a, in my, one of my bathrooms, it smells like a sewer backup. I've never had that problem until that retainer wall was built, and I've been to the water company, and told them about it.
This is, do you smell the sewer primarily when we have heavy rains?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a relationship between the sewage smell and heavy rains at a certain time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And plus, and plus the water coming at you from what you say off the City Place parking lot and everything above that, correct?
Yes, sir, because there's a, a, covered, yes, and all that water floods down there, which makes the water rise real high, and my parents were going to be here, but they're out of town, but everybody in our neighborhood, their water, it holds a lot of water in their yards.
Especially when it rains.
Does that only happen since the City Place parking lot was constructed?
Yes. And when it rains, it just gushes out of the, the, what is that called, cover, and they put rocks, I went over to the, well, anyway, I went somewhere up here, and I told them about it, and they was going to see about it, but when it's getting, when it rains, it still floods out there real bad, and I guess they thought those big rocks was going to do something about it, but it just floods our property, and my property is from Second Street to Third Street, and that's the back end of my property, and it's just a mess.
Okay. Well, have you ever been here before about that issue in your past, or no?
No, I haven't been here, but I went to whatever place it is in the courthouse.
Works the Public Works or the Lagrange Utilities?
No, it's right over here, I had to come and talk to these people over here.
In this building here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, downstairs.
Okay, okay.
In the, I don't know what they call it, I'm sorry, but, and they said they was going to see something about it, but don't seem like they've done anything.
Have you talked to the landowner yet, the City Place, or?
No, I don't know them, I don't know how to get in touch with them.
Okay, and is it just, you think it's just stormwater, there's not sewage, is it?
No, it's just stormwater, what I'm talking about, but when it rains, the sewer backs up, when, what she's talking about.
Okay.
And the sewer is right there at the end of my property, it's a, you know, it's a big sewer there, and that smell just comes up.
Yeah, which street is yours, which house?
I'm on Second, I'm on South Second, 206, but my property is on Third, back end of my property is on Third Street.
Okay, and which, what's your street address?
Mine is South Third.
Third, okay.
We, Lagrange is a code permittee on the Oldham County Stormwater Management Plan, and we're a code permittee under the Stormwater Guidelines, so we're part of that program, and since you haven't been here before, what I'd like to suggest tonight is Stephanie Winter, who's our code enforcement lady that works with stormwater, with Cory Rusnick and our Director of Public Works, I will ask them to monitor that and come and look at it, especially during rains, for sure, but it sounds like to me your detention area is not adequate or something, but something they could look at, and then as far as the sewage side of it, I'm going to direct you to the Lagrange Utilities, Mr. Ted Chisholm, to see perhaps why you may be getting a whiff of sewage in the event the heavy rains come.
Now, I have talked to Mr. Ted Chisholm.
Okay.
And he told me what I need is a backflow valve, but I've never had that problem until...
They put the parking lot in.
Well, I personally don't know about backflow valves, and Ted evidently does, but that is something that we need to understand, how that would help you from doing what's happening to you, if you understand what I'm saying, so we can talk about that as well.
Well, when I had my sewer changed around, because I used to have a backflow valve, because the sewer was higher than my property.
Yes, ma'am.
And it would come back into my house, and I eventually had the sewer line switched to the back, where it comes out the Third, out on Third Street.
Okay.
And that stopped that problem, but since they built that at the parking lot, the problem is recurring.
Well, at this time, all I can suggest we do, we're going to take some looks at it, investigate it further, since you've come here tonight, that's what I can promise you that we can do. Other council members might have something otherwise to suggest, Ted Chisholm's welcome to come up and comment, but maybe that's for a later time, and Cory on her detention, or Stephanie Winter, but I think these are things that we can, now that you're here, we can come and see you, contact you, and see exactly what we think we can do to help you out.
And well, like you said, that where the water flows down, it's coming from the spring over that area, and it just, it's just too much water for the little creek that we have going through our property to hold it all.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Okay, any council person wish to address their issues?
I mean, is there any way that I can show you on my phone how bad this is?
I don't know how to do it other than on your phone, and I don't know how many people are going to see it, can you put it on that, the projector, and would that work technology folks?
It'll work.
Okay, can I get some technology people to help me?
Where's our technology department, see?
If we got a refrigerator here someplace, they can do it.
You'd have to have a cord, or?
I don't know, don't know how visible it will be, but we'll take a look at it real quick, and then we'll move on.
There's the video right there.
Miss Booker, does it come straight across from where the pipe is, where the spring is, does it come straight across that toward your house?
It, no, not my house, it's in my yard, in the backyard.
This backyard, okay.
It comes, you see, it's up, up like this.
I've seen it, yeah.
And that water comes down and hit them big rocks, but it still just keeps off where that branch is, it just flows on down through there.
It's a small branch, yeah.
And it just flows the whole back.
Yeah.
You gotta clear that on.
This right here is South Third, where I live.
Heather, put this pin underneath it so it removes the light, so it doesn't reflect.
Bubbling up through the street, what's that, you think?
That's water, that's one of my neighbors that did that, and he forwarded that to me, I've got more, my husband has more, he wasn't able to come tonight, that's also my street, if you could see my, the street is just covered, can you see that, you can't even see the road.
Wow.
So you can imagine how my house is, and the backup sewage smell, and like I said, I've been to Ted Chisholm several times about this, and that's all I get is get you a backflow valve.
Okay, well, we can continue to discuss your situation, that's what I can promise you tonight.
Yes, sir.
How we resolve it, I'm not sure at this moment, but we'll certainly try to see what your issues are down there, okay?
Yes, sir, and could you tell me the other two names you said?
Ted Chisholm, Lagrange Utilities, Cory Rusnick, Director of Public Utilities, and Steph-
Which one is he?
He's back there in the room, or whatever, and then Stephanie Winter over there, she's our code enforcement officer who works in stormwater management with different properties.
Yes, sir, and what, where's her office?
Right in City Hall.
City Hall, okay.
She'd be glad to see you at 8:30 in the morning, sharp.
Okay.
Well, while I'm here, could it be discussed about what they are planning to do with the park and everything down there?
That's an ongoing discussion, as we're sitting here, you're familiar with that, you've been to some of those meetings, and certainly water detention and whatever we do there will be taken into strict understanding what it's doing presently and what we expect it to do in the future, so as we get with our architects, our engineers to continue with that park idea, we will certainly know what's occurring here down on Third Street and your property, you know, where you all are, and take that into account as well.
I've got a bunch more of these, I just didn't get to bring them with me tonight that I can give you all, because, I mean, it's a lot of water.
Why don't you give them to Stephanie, and she can take a look at her, Cory, and then compile them all.
Okay.
Because, wait a minute, I got one more, um, four minutes is up yet?
Yeah, it's up, but we're going to go on with it.
Okay, over there on Third Street, you know, it used to come all the way through, but it doesn't, it, it's dumped, it was a dump after they covered it up, and it was an Arington House, and the lot next to the Arington House is nothing but springs over in there, what are they going to do about that?
Nothing but what?
Springs.
And it goes in there.
Because I was a child, that I played over there, and it's nothing but springs there, do they know that?
Well, there's geotechnical surveys going on, and will continue to go on, on the geotechnical and what's going on underneath the ground in relation to where that dump was you were speaking of, so that will be looked into as well.
Yeah.
We don't want to certainly put any more water on you than what you're already getting, and we'd like to work within the development of park to cause it to be less water, if we can, we're just going to have to figure out how to reroute it, detain it, hold it back, and things like that. Okay? But thank you.
And my biggest concern too is with that sewer, because to me, that's not healthy.
Well, we're going to look into that as well, okay? We're looking at it.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to have discussion on golf carts specifically here in a little bit, but, and we'll let anyone wants to speak on that subject matter at that point in time. Is there anyone else here want to speak to the City Council during public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, Lagrange, Kentucky, I've been talking with these people for at least a year, and we have been sent to every agency, they've been told to call every agency, I first met them at a city park meeting when they were talking about the new plans for the skate park, and one of the ladies raised their hand and said, "What is going to happen about all this flooding?" With City Place going in and them raising the property and putting in a pipe this big that does nothing but shoot out across the, it's like it doesn't care where the water goes, it's like New Orleans, where I'm from, part of the way, the water shoots out here, all of their property is down there, there's no place for that water to go, it needs to be enclosed somehow or another, and I talked to the man who has to do with planning, people submitting plans and all that kind of stuff, and what they said was, "That should have been taken into consideration, and it should have been taken care of at the time City Place and the parking was done." It has, it wasn't, and they just keep getting shifted from place to place to place, and it's a mess, I mean, none of us would want to live in what they're living in, you know, I mean, it's bad enough when it's not raining, but then it's an absolute river, and they can't park there, nothing, and they have been given names, and they have gone to all these people, and I've called too, and the last person I talked to said, "They need to go to the City Council and talk to the City Council and get them to do something," but I also think Mr. Rawlings and the people who drew up those plans are responsible, because there is no way that they can say, and those people have the money to do it right, there's no way you can say something drops down that far, it's got to be the lowest place in this town, every water, all the water from everywhere goes there, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm not trying to irritate anybody, but at the same time, none of us would want to live there, and they have talked to everybody.
Well, they never have been here before, so that's the reason, that's the reason we will look into it.
Okay, but I also think that Mr. Rawlings and the people who drew those plans up had to know something, and the people who raised that level of that park, they had to haul in so much dirt to get that place level, there is no way they didn't know that was going to be a flood problem. There's a little pipe coming out from the parking lot, but there's this massive thing I could use as a studio apartment, coming out of a hill, so, thank you, Mayor.
I know where you're talking about, and...
Yeah, but they, but everybody has been contacted, and finally- But they, but everybody has been contacted, and finally, this is where they're at. So, be a hero.
We want to do something about it, because we want to save the springs, too.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, yeah. I mean, it's, it, with all that money going into that area, the least that can be done is pipe that frigging water.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else at this time for public comment?
Tracy Bing, 604 Lakeview Drive, LaGrange, Kentucky. My, I haven't got the complaint. I want to tell Ted on the Water District how good they are at least. My, I got home, went in the house from city council, it smelled like syrup. I thought something's desperately a-matter, which we cut them red like, you know, in the back of our house. The first thing I went and looked at, the pump station was out. Oh, the pump, I think he called it. About two days, two weeks later, same thing happened again, and they were right there to get it fixed, and I appreciate it. I mean, because the house just, I mean, if you're taking me home and then it, I'd still be embarrassed today to look at you, even knowing it's not my fault, but-
Right, right. But Ted, Mr. Ted Chisholm took care of it all.
The man came right on out, and I told him, I said, "Now, if I knew this was going on, I would have left the meeting and came and took care of it."
Sure.
And he says, "Well, I appreciate that." But I said, "I didn't know until I walked in the house, and it just about killed you."
Did you give us your address, Tracy? I didn't, I don't remember.
604 Lakeview Avenue.
Okay, so that's where the issue was, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
We appreciate good comments, as well as the complaints, that both of them are important.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? If no one else, we are closed that portion of our meeting. Item eight tonight is a, a general discussion among the council members on the use of golf carts. I'll let Chairman Joe Davenport speak in just a moment here, but how I'd like for this sort of be discussed with the council and the audience as well. The, actually, the committee wanted some feedback from the public on this type of usage of golf carts on the city streets, even before they would consider having a first reading of ordinance to either allow it or deny it. So that was the committee's decision, so tonight is a, will be an opportunity for those who want to speak on the golf carts in general, whether you like the idea, you oppose the idea, or what your position would be. I think before we get into that discussion, what I'd like to do is go to Joe Davenport, and I would like to probably see our city attorney weigh in on the subject, and also our Assistant Police Chief Bruce Goodflesh, who's here tonight. He's very familiar with the KRS statute in Kentucky that is the authority in terms of KRS regulations, whether we abide by them or not, we've got to do a certain amount of things in relation to KRS to permit them in our city and/or the county. So at this time, Mr. Joe, Mayor Joe, would you like to open up and tell the council or the, and the audience where you feel we are, and then maybe ask Beach for his opinion on the subject, and then anything you want to brief the whole room on, on the KRS, it's fine. After that, we will take public comment, whether a person stands for it or against it, and then we'll give it to the council and let them have an opportunity to discuss it. Thank you all, good night. Bye-bye. And we'll let the council discuss it. So Joe, would you like to proceed, buddy?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a committee meeting about this. Andrea and Debbie's on the committee, and we had a good discussion on it, and the, we decided to bring it to the council instead of us even making a recommendation. One, one of the main reasons I want to do that, the only thing I heard, we had a few residents that wanted to, for instance, take their golf cart from Sanita Springs and drive it down to Farmer's Market. And so, when I got to looking at the revised statute 189.286, and realized that we, if we do an, if we do pass an ordinance on, for allowing golf carts on public streets, that there's a lot in this ordinance that has to be abided by before you can actually, you can't just take your golf cart that you had on your trailer and go into the golf course with it, and the same cart, and put it on the street and drive it, because Kentucky statute won't allow that. So, that's where we stand, and so, the main reason, when I talked to you, Mayor, and you decide we'd have a, see what the public decides on it, because my stance was it on it, that I don't think these people that, that wants to drive their carts on the street knows exactly what all is in this ordinance, or in this Kentucky revised statute that will allow them to have their golf cart on the, on the city street or public right away. So, that's where we stand on it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Davenport. Beach, would you like to weigh in on this as city attorney?
Well, sure. We looked at the KRS that Joe just mentioned, and it's a pretty significant regulatory burden that's being, that would be placed on the police and as well as the sheriff. The inspect, the vehicles have to be like, almost like cars, okay? They got to have brakes, brake lights, headlights, turn signals, seat belts. And the sheriff has to do the inspections, and then the city police have jurisdiction for traffic, or any police officer would have jurisdiction for violations. The biggest problem is crossing state roads. We don't, the city doesn't have jurisdiction over state roads, and so there's a specific provision for state, for the, for the golf carts to cross state roads. If they're, the roads have a certain speed limit that's less than 35 miles per hour, so all those city streets, I think, in the city of, in the city of LaGrange are under 35. I, I believe that this statute, which was just recently amended, effective of June of this year, and it became more restrictive and more stringent this year, and it just went into effect, so any other communities out there that have laws probably do not have them under this current ordinance, law, state law. I believe the intent, and most of the ordinances that I've seen in other jurisdictions have to do with golf course communities, like Eagle Creek, or Hunting Creek, or any, any of the golf course communities where people like to ride their golf court, golf carts to the golf course. And the, the fundamental concern that the city has to look at is the safety of people who may be driving these little golf carts. I mean, they got to have a big orange thing on the back, and you always hear all these horror stories about shakers or the Amish who have these on the back of their buggies, and they get smashed into by some vehicle in the back, which we don't want to see that happen, and so, before we would open up this potential safety issue, we want to make sure that nobody's going to get hurt by some stranger that, or even a resident that pulls into town and, you know, decides to go fast down Main Street, which is a city street, and gets run into in the back, into a golf cart, which they aren't expecting to be on the streets. So, it's, it's a large undertaking that we don't want to do lightly. You know, years past, you know, we used to have horses and buggies, you know, and years past, people could ride golf carts up and down the streets. But this is 2019, and there aren't, I think I saw a Lamborghini on the street the other day, you know, so I mean, there's, things have changed, and if, if it was safe, we'd love to be able to have a golf cart community in downtown LaGrange, but I'm not sure whether we've reached that point yet, so. That's the, that's the law issue of it. We do have the power, the city has the power to allow golf carts on the streets, but we also have a responsibility to the safety of the people that would be driving them.
Uh, just for the general public and the folks watching from home, KRS 189.286, just some, a few definitions of a golf cart. As it's stated in 189.286, a golf cart is designed for the transportation of players or maintaining equipment on a golf course while engaging in playing golf, supervising golf, or maintaining the condition of the, or the grounds. It has a minimum of four wheels. It is designed to operate at a speed of not more than 35 miles per hour. It is designed to carry not more than six persons, including the driver, has a maximum gross weight, vehicle weight of 2,500 pounds, has a maximum rated payload capacity of 1,200 pounds, and is also is equipped with the following: headlights, tail lamps, stop lamps, front and rear turn signals, one red reflex, reflector on each side, as far as to the rear as practical, an exterior mirror mounted on the driver's side of the vehicle, a parking brake, and for each designated seating position, a seat belt assembly that conforms to the Federal Motor Vehicle Safety Standard provided in 49 CFR. So that's basically what it says in the statute. So at this time, Mr. Bruce Goodflesh, would you like to come up and maybe bring anything from our, your department as to anything you'd like to weigh in on this discussion?
Mayor, if I could please, sir, also in, in this is the KRS 304.3, .39-080, and that's to where that requires owner and operator approval insurance shall be in the golf cart at all times. We didn't, we didn't just bring that up a while ago, so they are required to have insurance on them if they're going to drive them on public right away.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Pretty well-covered KRS. When they developed this KRS for law, that's what they do, they always start a law with definitions. So golf cart means a golf cart in the normal sense of a golf cart, but when they decided they were going to allow golf carts on the roadways or highways, then they became a motor vehicle, which is the reason that they have all these requirements. So your standard golf cart is not going to be legal for the street. The golf carts they're talking about, you might as well buy a small car, because that's about the prices you're going to get into. One caveat with this, as part of developing an ordinance under this KRS, you can go more stringent than KRS, but you cannot go less than what is defined in state law. From our point of view, once, if there is an approval of these golf carts, they'll have to be inspected, that's historically done by the sheriff's office. The city will most likely charge and have a permit, which will have a permit sticker or something that'll be displayed on the golf cart to let us know that they are an approved golf cart. The other thing with that would be basically a database of who has golf carts, so in the event that we have one that's stolen or missing, we can find, hopefully find it a lot easier. And it'll have to be, like I said, with the inspection, that's through the sheriff's office, and they set their fees for vehicle inspections. From our point of view, and the important part of this is when you do develop your ordinance, you do need to designate which streets you're allowed to have golf cart on, and the limit on that per KRS is the street, speed limit cannot exceed 35 miles per hour, nor can your path cross any road with a speed limit greater than 35 miles per hour. So the people in Eagle Creek can't get to anywhere but Eagle Creek, because they can't get out on 53 based on the speed limit. The operator of the golf cart has to have a valid operator's license. If they have no license or have a suspended license, we treat it the same as if you're driving your car. They have to be operated between the hours of sunrise and sunset. Even though they have headlights, they're not to be out on the road after dark. They have to display the slow-moving vehicle emblem, which is that large red triangle that they place on the back. They have to be insured, just like a vehicle, so you'll have to carry insurance for the vehicle itself and liability insurance for any passengers that you may have. They are exempt from title registration and vehicle emissions, which we don't have, but they are exempt from those. And then there's some provisions in there for some additional golf cart stuff, where you get into the UPS and FedEx and that, where they have delivery carts, it's a whole another subsection you all can, I don't know what you've discussed in committee, but that's a whole nother subsection of golf carts and vehicles. And then we, eventually we'll get into the question of ATVs and razors and that sort of stuff, because a lot of those vehicles do have headlights and taillights and such. KRS has separate laws dealing with ATVs, very specific, they can't be driven on the roadways except for specific purposes like related to farming or agriculture. They have the same restrictions on crossing roadways. They have helmet requirements, which golf carts do not. Some other things to think about on a safety issue with these golf carts is particularly in the vehicle passenger restraint systems, what are you going to do when granddad wants to take his young granddaughter or grandson out, and we're dealing with car seats, you know, are they, can they be adequately secured? Then we run into other issues where we've had of recent with complaints where they just let the kids take the golf cart out because they don't see any harm in it. So those are all things that we'll have to look forward to, potentially. Some things that were discussed in your office committee, Greg sent you an email with everything on it, I don't need to discuss those unless you want me to bring them up.
Aye.
The committee, I, I'm sure you'll disseminate it to everybody. When you get to the actual ordinance development stage, if you get that far, then there's some things that need to be discussed.
Major, I've got a, a email from Chief Collett with a lot of those on there that discusses razors and-
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted that brought up now, or just save all that.
I think we've pretty much covered basically the golf carts right now. I guess, I don't know what will happen if, if those were all before us, so, you know, if you're talking about the side-by-sides, I noticed I looked up some of these, they call side-by-sides, and they're, the definition, and, and when I looked it up, said, "Like a golf cart," which I don't know-
Well, the caveat in KRS is in the first lines where they talk about the definition of a golf cart, and they primarily relate it to a golf course, like what you go up here and rent and put your clubs on. That's where they start, and then the modifications to make it streetworthy are with the additional of the headlights and everything else, which is not an ATV. So that's the, that's the difference there.
Bruce, can I ask, is there a, a way to distinguish between usage of golf carts for special events? For example, if there's a fair or so, and they're hauling ice around and the streets are closed?
There can be exemptions added into the ordinance. Like I said, you can make it stricter, but you can't make it less.
Right.
So you can add exemptions for public safety, city works, if they have a, a vehicle like that, or even for event vendors, as long as they meet the requirements, or whatever exemption you want to place in there.
What, what about under your current safe traffic ordinances? I mean, are there any, are you, do you have anything?
There's nothing that allows golf carts on the road.
We have nothing under traffic other than state law, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yep, I have a few questions. So right now, if I had a golf cart and I wanted to drive it on a city street, I have to go to the county to get it permitted under the sheriff's office, under the state law, correct? Right now?
If you're going to operate it in the county, they have their own ordinance, and they have all their designated streets, so it would fall under them, and the streets that you're allowed to drive it on, they have all those listed in their ordinance.
Okay, and that's what the state law says, is what you're saying, so they, I guess evidently are a little bit more strict possibly than the state law. I don't know what the county law is.
You can go stricter, but you can't go less.
Do you, by chance, know, so it says that it could be up to a $5 fee and then $10 additional fee, do you happen to know what the county fee is?
I don't.
I don't either, so, okay, all right, well, thank you.
I think his question was, Major, was if we were to choose to do this in a city, do you still go to the county sheriff to get the inspection? And the statute from the state, state of Kentucky says that's who's to be the inspection department, not city police, or anything. It should be the sheriff's department.
Because they do all vehicle inspections.
Is that what you want to know, Trey?
That's part of it, but also, I guess, the main question I'm asking, right now, there is some sort of law, it's county law, it's not city law, because we would fall, like you said, we fall under their-
We're, we're in Olden County, but the city of LaGrange is its own municipality, so the ordinance would have to be specific for the city of LaGrange for golf carts from the city of LaGrange.
If, if we wanted to make something- If, if we wanted to make something.
I don't know the question, if you take your La Grange golf cart out into the county, as long as it meets the same statutes, that would be a question that the city and county eventually, if we get this ordinance, uh, would be good to coordinate the ordinances, to make sure that there's crossover and that sort of thing. But there's no way to get to the county places unless you trailer.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
What actually prompted the county to do it when they did it? I was there and it was, uh, a request by UPS. UPS was the requesting agency because they wanted to pull a truck into different subdivisions in the county, uh, drop a golf cart off the back of it, and then deliver packages within those respective neighborhoods. So that's how that came about originally, so.
If you're having trouble sleeping, KRS 189-283 deals with all the commercial UPS and all that stuff. You can look that up. That's available online also. That's a separate KRS dealing specifically with their, uh, type of business.
189.
283, yeah, 189.283.
Okay, Major, thank you so much for that. And, um, at this time, we're opening floor for anyone who wants to come up and speak on golf carts in general and what your opinion is in terms of their operation on city streets in La Grange.
I don't know how to, Richard W. Rankin, senior, 519 Horton Road, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031. I own one, you can call it a golf cart if you want to. It's not, I don't recommend it is unless it's got a golf bag carrier on the back. Nobody seems to know what they want to do yet. I'm going to make this comment. Take it as you want to take it. Makes no difference to me anymore. I'm going to drive my golf cart where I'm going to drive my golf cart, okay? That's the way it's going to be. Nobody knows what the fine's going to be yet. I've been doing this for 16 years. Like I told you last week, four mayors, we went through four mayors and nobody yet stopped Dip from doing what he's doing. And all four mayors have seen me on my little cart. And why y'all blowing this out of proportion, I have the slightest idea. Going up and down 146 where the speed limit's 45 to 55, I understand it. You know, it takes somebody, a blooming idiot, to get out there and do that. But crossing the state highway at Elders and Fifth Street where I do it to go to Catlet Shell sometimes to have my lunch, breakfast, whatever it can be. I go to a car show when I got pulled over and I was headed to an event. And that's what happened. That's why it's all stirred up. I ain't out to bother nobody. I don't want to be bothered. I'm at the end of the street. I want left alone. But yeah, this is getting out, this is getting way out of hand, people. It's getting way out of hand. But what I don't understand is we went through four mayors over this and they passed it in prospect to let them get the golf carts out and deliver packages. Wasn't a big deal. Wasn't a big deal. But we went through four mayors and nobody's ever said anything to Dip. But all once, now they're down on this little old man. Leave me alone. I got this comment. Go ahead.
Well, I, I, I believe I would be remiss if I just sit here and let you say you're going to disregard the law. So I'm just saying you're taking your chances. If the police catch you and they write you a ticket, you can tell it to the judge and decide what they want to do. But that's, that's the law, is what we just told you, it's against the law to cross 146. It's against the law to cross 53.
Not necessarily. No, not at the 35 mile per hour.
Thirty five miles an hour. It's a four-lane road, but, uh.
I don't think that matters. It's, it's the speed limit.
Well, you got to have a permit, okay? And it has to be inspected. You have to have seat belts, stoplights, headlights.
I heard all that.
Okay, you got all that?
I heard it.
Okay. And so did, so did Major Goodflesh.
I heard it.
Okay.
I heard it. What's the fine going to be when I'm caught? Because I will get caught.
That's up to them. It's whatever the state law says, because it's not, there's no city law against it.
Right.
So we don't have a city law. There's a state law.
And I rode one in the city for eight years. And it had everything on it that was necessary, the triangle, all the safety things, everything that they mentioned. And it was not dangerous because of the speed limit that the other cars are going, 35. They see you. I don't think it's dangerous. I did it for eight years. And, um, I think that people in Crystal Lake, that is a community that is full of golf carts, that's out of the city, it's not in the city, but they really appreciate their golf carts. And I think we will come to do that too. I think it'll finally be.
They should, they should come and ask for those streets to be enacted.
You can question Mr. Rankin, but let's, let's hold your thoughts for our general discussion, Elsie, okay?
Here.
I already have a say, yeah.
Yeah.
Here's your right turn. Here's your left turn. And there's your slow turn. So far as adding turn signals, you don't have to have them. Right turn, left turn, slow. There they are. KRS. That's what we had to go through when we was paper boys. Right, John Black?
What's that? What'd you say?
Yeah.
I didn't hear what you said.
When you had to deliver your newspapers.
Oh.
Colonel Turner come out here, right, right around. Right signal.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I didn't think you did.
No newspapers anymore.
They came out and taught them how to, to give the turn signals on their bicycles.
I, I don't hold no ill against anybody about it. But I guess I'm going to make a statement. I'm grandfathered in because I've been doing it over 10 years. Right?
An interesting theory, I.
No, it is a theory. Anything over 10 years that you've been doing on a piece of equipment, you're grandfathered in.
I never heard that one.
That's fact.
That's your homework. Okay, uh, yes, sir.
I have a question. Do you happen to know what the county, um, for violating their ordinance, do you happen to know what that charge is, by chance?
Who, me?
Yes.
No, I don't, I don't, it's like the police officer would probably know. If you got pulled over and you didn't have your, uh, seatbelt on, like I got pulled over one time because I was just going two, I was going one block, you know, and I didn't have my seatbelt on. So I, there's a ticket. There's a fine. I don't know how much the fine is.
There is a taken in and existing fine. It's not that, there's not one because we're, we're under the county currently.
It's, it's, it's like up to the judge. It's a $120 court cost, which can be waived, you know? So it's up to the judge to decide what, 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 what the, what the fine would be, whether it would be dismissed or charged or what, and how many times it's been. But we don't have any county, city. Well, we could look at the county ordinance and see what their fine structure is.
Yeah, but, um, when you're talking about a fine structure by the county, if it's being regulated by the state of Kentucky and the police are the ones giving the citation, that's all reported to state archives and, and police, policing in your cities and counties. Seems like to me those fines would go to this, back to the state, wouldn't they, Bruce? They wouldn't be coming to the city of La Grange as a fine, correct or not correct?
You'll set your fee structure and fine structure for viol, violations of the actual ordinance itself. Traffic violations that are violations of KRS, like you don't have your insurance, you don't have your seatbelt on, you're driving recklessly, you don't have your headlights on after dark, shouldn't be out there anyway. But those things, we would issue a state citation and the fee structure and fine structure is already set by the state. The court costs you're talking about, they've gone up quite a bit. They're 163 now, so. But that's what the, the court cost and the fee structure through KRS for, if we cite for a KRS violation. If we cite for an ordinance, you all have to set what the penalties are, uh, in the ordinance for violation of the ordinance. Like if you had an unauthorized cart out there or something like that. We deal with the actual KRS violations with the operation of the cart. So if you don't have your insurance, you'll get a ticket for no insurance, the same as you would with your vehicle.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Can you, I have another question, just for my general knowledge. I don't know, we're kind of beating this to death here, but, um, so there's the state law. So the county evidently enacted some sort of law that is a little bit more strict than what the state law is. I have no idea what it says.
I've not studied the county's ordinance, but what I've briefed over it, it looks to mirror state law.
Okay.
Um, if they've added more stringent, I'm not familiar with it.
They possibly have, I don't, I don't know either.
But it's not less than what state law requires.
But since the city of La Grange is inside the county of Oldham County, Oldham County's...
We don't get grandfathered because Oldham County has an ordinance pertaining to golf carts operation on the road.
We would only fall under the state law, not county.
There is no current law now that says you can run your golf cart on the road.
In city of La Grange?
Be correct. It has to be by ordinance from you all.
I might be able to help, Trey. I read the county ordinance in our committee meeting. And what happens is, uh, specific neighborhoods have to petition the county to be included in that ordinance. So if you live in X neighborhood, you go to the county and say, we want to be able to ride our golf carts in our neighborhood. And then they are added to the county ordinance. So in the ordinance, there's a list of streets. Um, and any street in La Grange would not be on the county list of streets. So that's, I think, currently why we cannot operate them in the city limits. We are not on any of those lists of streets that are permitted to operate golf carts in the county.
Right now, there is no permission to ride any kind of golf cart in city limits at all.
On what's considered a roadway or highway, correct?
And if someone did get pulled over, they'd get issued a, a ticket by the state fee schedule. And that would be the fine.
Correct. Violation they committed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You going to see on your golf cart?
I don't own a golf cart, so.
What about ATVs? The same thing go for them?
There's separate laws for ATVs. Uh, they're very specific when they can be on the roadway and it's.
Can you get us a copy of that?
Primarily related to agricultural functions. So if you're a farmer and you need to get from one field to the next, they do allow operation of the ATV on the roadway to get to your next farm function. Then actual operation of ATVs on private property, you have to have permission from the property owner. There's helmet laws that are in place. There's, uh, operator limits for ages and that sort of thing for ATVs. But there's all different types of ATVs.
Is the number that you gave us, uh? Hmm? Oh, he got it, yeah.
189-283. That deals with the commercial operation, which would be the UPS, FedEx.
Okay, what about for ATVs? Do you know the number on that maybe?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'll give you, give me just a second.
Okay.
And I'll give it to you.
I'd like to see a copy of that and compare it to the others.
It is 189, 515.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one other statement. So basically, absolutely not acceptable to drive any kind of golf cart in the city of La Grange.
Currently.
Currently.
On the roadways.
On the roadways. If the city of La Grange did want to permit this, then that's where we'd have to come up with our own ordinance.
Correct.
And our petition to the county ordinance to say, we want to add these streets to your ordinance or make up our own.
We would add to, this would be the city of La Grange's separate.
Your option to do.
Because we have, we have ordinances that are different than the county anyway. Like, for instance, the curfew ordinance, that's unique to the city of La Grange. You would want to draft your own ordinance with specific streets, uh, on there. You wouldn't want to just say the city at large because that leaves too much open for interpretation. That leaves the people at Eagle Creek that says, hey, I want to run to Kroger, but they have to run down 53, which they can't do by, by state law and ordinance. Um, so the wise thing to do would be to name the streets that you're going to permit these vehicles to be on because you have to ensure that these streets, speed limits are less than 35, which all the residentials are, but that they don't cross a street where the speed limit is greater than 35 miles per hour. So they couldn't cross 53. There are sections of 146 they can't cross, um, just on, as an example for those. So you would want to set your own ordinance and you would want to set where you would allow these vehicles because we can't ensure everybody's safety, but you want to do, you don't want to make a reckless ordinance.
Right.
So you don't want to have golf carts out doing figure eights and stuff. They need to be operated, they're operated on the, on the highway just like any other motor vehicle and they need to be operated the same as you would operate a motor vehicle. And they have to have the safety, uh, equipment in place to be allowed to be on the highway. And that's what KRS dictates. So you can't go less than that. You have to go with what we have on KRS at minimum. You can make it stricter if you want. Fee structures and all that stuff, you all set within, within your ordinance.
Thank you.
Let me ask you this, uh, Major. I was in, uh, coming across Fort Pickens Road the other day and golf cart was moving back and forth between Lesco, the company. So they've been doing that for some time, I'm sure. That's how they move, maneuver back and forth between their operations on Les, at Lesco.
Mm-hmm.
So unless you wrote something and exempted them in, you'd have to do that to make it fair across the board in the whole city, I would assume.
Right.
And then I think there's folks who come from Preswick Estates and also in Glen Eagle subdivision that come to the Eagle Creek Golf Course to play golf on golf carts. So if we do nothing, are we going to have to write something in order to make them permissible because we now said nothing to the whole system of city streets in La Grange?
The key to it is, is highway operation, roadways. And the state defines pretty much any roadway as a highway, uh, for motor vehicle enforcement. Okay? So the people from Eagle Creek, the neighborhood going to the golf course are cutting through, I would hope, or they're riding along the side.
Yeah, but they're, they're traveling city streets in order to get the cut through to the course.
Correct.
So what are you going to do about those?
The original, the original caveat with this entire thing, as it began years and years ago, when you had golf, just like Joe said, you had golf course communities that said, hey, like Glen Oaks is a perfect example. The golf course completely goes through the, a, a great majority of the neighborhood. A lot of people are there because they like to play golf. They like to get on their golf cart and go right to the course. But at some point, there was a determination that, hey, they're on public highways for what the state would define highways, which is your roadways. So they had to come up with, uh, a law on it. Somebody at some point came up with a law on it and says, the original law was within five miles of a golf course. And that, I think that's when you had your golf cart. That's when it first came out. It was a five-mile radius. But then they realized that that wasn't feasible because five miles is a big radius and there's a lot of streets that are in there and highways that wouldn't meet a safety standard. So then they since pared the law and amended it several times for this. So the state is not encouraging or discouraging the use of golf carts on the highway. All they're saying is, is if you're going to do it, you have to have an ordinance in your municipality and it has to have this at minimum. And then everything else, if you draft this ordinance, if you want to go stricter, uh, then you have to figure out what it is that you want to do from there.
Thank you so much.
There's Bud, right?
Okay, um.
Thing else? Trey, you done?
Well, actually, I'm sorry, I did have a question. Sorry to keep you up.
Yeah. So.
So, he?
I know. Would, Jeff, just, just settle down. Rich, Richard, okay? He, the reason he's coming back and forth, because he's our police deputy, uh, major, okay? To answer questions for the council. That's the only reason he's coming back and forth, okay?
Just to confirm, so I know earlier when we started this discussion, it was to determine whether or not we would need to have an ordinance to allow it or an ordinance not to allow it. But we don't really need an ordinance, an ordinance not to allow it unless we wanted to attach an additional fine, correct? Because it's already not allowed. There's, basically, we're recovered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've not been privy to the committee meetings, and I was only briefed by the chief. He's out of town this week, so he has me here in his place. So I don't know what discussions have occurred. Obviously, there's been an interest in golf carts to be used on the roads. That's why we're here.
Right.
With this total discussion. So I'm just here to offer input. Uh, I don't care one way or the other. I still get paid for eight hours a day, a lot times more. But, um, we just want to make sure we're safe for the community. And if you're going to do it, then you do it under your terms with, this is how we want it to work, to ensure as much safety as we can for our residents.
Right.
Uh, that are going to do this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else, uh, other than the ones who've already spoken, uh, would like to speak? Because where we're, where we will go now is, we're going to open up to the council itself, and what we're looking for is, is a sort of a, sort of a consensus type of, uh, understanding to move this ordinance either to a, this, uh, writing of a ordinance to have a first reading, so we can have a public hearing on that matter, advertise it publicly, it'll have two readings, or we have a consensus that there's no interest in it. So at this time, uh, it's open for discussion.
I've had the experience of driving the golf cart in the city and going places, um, almost everywhere in the city. And I had no trouble. I think if it is put through as an ordinance, then everybody complies. And I think that the identification is a good, uh, thing to do. I think, I was kind of against that at first. I was against it at first, but I think it's a good thing, because that way, if my golf cart got stolen, they could find it. You know, it's, it's identifiable, it's got the ticket on it, et cetera. I think that the rules are fair for what they've got on it. Now, there are some things there that have been brought up, that we did use to use our signals with our arms, and I don't see anything wrong with that either. Although maybe someone wouldn't see them the way they would a light, a, you know, a turn signal. But I think that we restrict enough with government, and I don't think we should be restrictive for things that people want or need or seem reasonable. And it seems reasonable to me, maybe not to you all, but that's just where I'm coming from. So have a look.
I would just kind of go from the opposing view, that although, yes, it's personal property, and I understand the desire to want to drive it and respect that, that because we do have to comply with these KRS statutes, that even if, I would personally have the safety concern of all the things that the major mentioned, especially when you're dealing with children involved. But just because we have to comply with this, I think it would make it very difficult to have the streets listed out and be able to enforce that. And you're going to have a lot of people that perhaps might get confused about which streets they can go on or which they can't, and they might get upset. But I also have concerns of the safety issues.
Just make it, instead of the streets, I don't think we should include the streets. It should be the city of La Grange with the speed limit that the state has, has acknowledged would be correct at thirty-five. Now, if you go out across the interstate from McDonald's to Walmart, that's forty-five, and you would not be allowed to do that, because it's forty-five miles an hour, and that's pretty fast. And I never did that, because I knew that it was pretty fast. And they also told me, back when we investigated it, whether it was okay to do it or not, um, our other chief, Collette, did that for me, and it was okay, as long as you were in the thirty-five or less speed limit. So I don't think we need to designate streets or anything else, just the city of La Grange, which is what we are, and with the speed limit, which is a safety factor of thirty-five. That would be, seems like it would be reasonable.
Well, I'm just looking at, from the, what KRS requires and what it deems a golf cart. Um, yes, I've seen some with, you know, the headlights, the taillights, the stoplights, and, you know, the front and rear turn signals. It doesn't, from my reading of it, it doesn't say, "Or the use of hand signals," specifically says turn signals, and then the reflectors and a, um, seat belt and everything else. So to me, that's almost like a small car. I don't, I'm not familiar with golf carts. Do most golf carts have seat belts and all of those things in them?
Mine and everything that's listed on there.
It does? Most of them do?
It did, yes, I've, uh, yeah.
So I'm just saying, to me, that's, if you don't have any of those things, that, that'd be quite an investment, just to get a golf cart, you know, for sake of a better word, street legal.
Exactly.
Um, and I know also, besides, you know, listing or not listing the streets in the city of La Grange, you know, there's also the KRS statute in terms of crossing a state road. And that would be one-forty-six and fifty-three. There's lots of state roads that crisscross through here. So even if you could go around, you still have fairly limited mobility.
But if it's thirty-five miles an hour...
Because to get any, you can't cross a state road, from what I'm reading. You, you cannot cross fifty-three.
Thirty-five miles an hour? Yes, ma'am, you can. I think you're reading it wrong, I really do.
I must be rea, I thought we were saying that you could not cross...
No, you can.
One-forty-six, period, because it was a state maintained road.
Well, okay, one-forty-six out towards Spring House changes to forty-five miles an hour.
Right.
You couldn't go out there, unless we cha, had the state change the law to incorporate it all the way out past Spring House. We would have to...
Well, you did that when you were mayor, and you changed it back.
Wait just a second. Hold on. Elsie, uh, finish your statement.
Um, you would have to apply to the state in order to get that reduced to thirty-five, if that's what you all decided. But they could go as far as they could go all the way out there and cross the street if it's thirty-five. Now, if it changes to forty-five, that changes the whole thing. That makes it a, a, a more dangerous thing, really. And I agree with what they're saying. Now, if it was thirty-five, I would do it. But if it was forty-five, I'd be afraid to.
Right. That's a jurisdictional thing. It's, 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 it's any road. We only have juris, just think about what, who pays for the road, okay? If we're paying for the road, we have jurisdiction over it. If the county's paying for it, they have jurisdiction. So it, you, that, we can't pass, it's all in Article Two of this thing, Section Two, "On any public roadway, under its jurisdiction," and it says, "Specifying each roadway that is open for golf cart use." So it's not just crossing state roads, it's also crossing county roads. If they have a speed, posted speed limit of more than forty-five miles per hour, of more than thirty-five miles per hour. Um, so, yeah, that's the real issue, is whether it's, it's, uh, not a city road, okay? And then the speed limit is where it's being crossed. So, um...
From what I understood, one-forty-six and fifty-three had been considered state roads, and that was part of the issue. It wasn't just a city of La Grange maintained road.
Right.
But I may have misunderstood that or misheard. Um, but that was, that was my main thing, is if, you know, if one-forty-six and fifty-three, which are the main roads you have to cross to go anywhere, are considered state maintained roads...
Well, they are. But they're in the city of La Grange, and the state law says thirty-five miles an hour or under.
Leslie, the speed limit going your way changes right at the Jenner Printing Company to forty-five. Anything this side of, of the Jenner is thirty-five or less, okay? So they could cross anywhere from there to downtown. Going, uh, north, the forty-five begins at the convenient food mart. So anything this side of convenient, they could cross the highway. Going west, it begins at, um, I looked at, it's Anchor Avenue. At Anchor it begins, the forty-five, right beyond Anchor. So anything this side of Anchor, you could do it thirty-five or less. And then going south, it begins at the bridge, at I-71.
Right.
Anything, uh, north of the bridge would be thirty-five or less in the, in the town. So you could cross at those intervals.
Okay.
Way the law is...
It looks like it's four A and four B are specifically about the speeds and then the intersections from what we were handed.
I didn't understand that.
Four, four A and four B.
What does it say?
Um, that's the way that I read it. Specifically talks about thirty, thirty-five miles an hour or less, and then the intersection is, is what it be.
Yeah, but it's only, we only have jurisdiction over ci, city roads. We can't, you know, there, we're not allowed to authorize them to drive on county roads or state roads. They are allowed to cross one of those roads. But it's, it's the concept of concurrent jurisdiction. I mean, all three entities have jurisdiction, uh, over, over traffic. But, uh, the, actually, Section Six of this makes clear that the state law trumps, okay? So it wins, okay? And then, so they got to follow KRS Chapter one-eight-nine in all state laws regarding what, uh, roads, motor vehicles, okay? We can create more stringent rules for city roads, okay? And then we can ask Corey Rusnick, you know, for an inventory of the street roads, and we can see all the roads over which the city has jurisdiction. But we, we can't, uh, you know, all, all they can do is cross roads that we don't have jurisdiction over, which is counties, federal, county, state, and federal. Uh, I mean, if we wanted to take this to even a greater degree of absurdity, we could, we could go to, uh, I-71 and say, "Can they cross a, a federal road?" You know? Well, of course, it's going faster there, but then there's a fourth level of jurisdiction. So it, I mean, it's ultimately a study of safety. And, and what we would, we would, we need to have a safety study done, I would think, before you, and a, and a significant population request. Right now, we've got two or three people saying they want to hear it. We need to hear from the public what they want, before we go to all this trouble to pass a law, you know, because of one or two people have asked about it.
I just have to pop in and say, "I have a business that fronts fifty-three, and if you're saying that they could cross all the way from Main Street down to seventy-one, there are semi-trucks going up and down that road at a very great rate of speed. I would not feel okay with a golf cart."
Thirty-five miles an hour, though.
It is, they do not honor that. I have a business, and there are hidden...
Bruce, did you hear this?
There are hidden places to, to pop out, and I personally am concerned about, you know, a crossing and a, and a bad accident there. I...
In fact, I think golf carts might, might slow them down a little bit, if you think about it. The golf cart is only designated usually to go thirty-five miles an hour, and that's what they're, they're stating. And because if you, if you got on a forty-five road, you couldn't go forty-five in your golf cart, it doesn't go that fast.
Oh, I know what you're saying. I'm just saying, if they're just popping across fifty-three to go to Catlets or whatever, and there's a truck coming up, and they're not stopping...
If you, if I'm in a car, it's going to be the same thing. Because I could jump across there at thirty-five miles an hour.
Cars are more visible, and people are safer in them. There's airbags, there's, you know, there's, it's, for me, it's a safety issue.
I agree. And those, those speed limits are put in place based on safety in a car, not in a golf cart. So just because it's thirty-five, safe in a car, does not constitute safety in a golf cart.
This is true, but you know what? When you're on a golf cart, you're very much more careful, you're very much more aware of the train and all the other traffic. You really pay attention on a golf cart.
Oh, well, no, no doubt. I was driving the golf cart around, um, Eagle Creek, however, but that does not mean the other people around you are more attentive to you. You know, motorcyclists tend to be very attentive to the people around them, but we tend to not pay attention to the motorcyclists, and it's more dangerous, they're less protected. So I definitely can see that.
Will?
I'll see what I need to say. Uh, you know, Richard Rankin, he made a point. Uh, I think he's been the only person to drive a golf cart in a long time around here. The other person I remember used to drive a golf cart around La Grange was Bobby Simpson, a former Oldham County School basketball coach. He drove one with his children everywhere he went. Uh, Bobby was a big, uh, rider of golf carts before we had laws and maybe a big police department, stuff like that. But Bobby, I know, did it. And then I recall Elsie Carter doing it quite a bit. Um, as, as Mr. Rankin said, we've got two or three people here that would like to use their golf carts for this purpose. Um, I think Stephanie Winter has had a couple requests from a lady from Anita Springs, um, old Anita Springs. She would enjoy maybe on a Saturday morning, riding her golf cart up Kentucky Avenue to the farmer's market, picking up her fruits and vegetables, riding back home. Um, you know, we're still a pretty small community here. I understand we've got traffic in certain areas, but we also have a network of city streets that lead to our downtown, which we're putting emphasis on every day of the week. We're creating a nine-acre downtown park called the Springs that, you know, I want us to be a, a, a safe town, but also a town that has some fun, fun things about it. Um, we're getting ready to introduce tonight a first reading of our tourism ordinance for conventions, for downtown, uh, interests, ideas, and trying to bring people downtown. And maybe there could be a time that you could rent one of our Airbnbs coming online and maybe rent you a golf cart and just tour the historic homes and stay on the city streets, but comply with the state laws, which they've written evidently because there's been requests from all over Kentucky about this usage of golf carts in different communities. So they just didn't write it because La Grange may want to do it. They wrote it because all of Kentucky evidence requesting it. So they put together a pretty stringent set of rules to go by, by state thoughts adopted by the state legislature to enact this type of statute. Uh, we presently have golf carts on these streets at Lesko, Eagle Creek. Uh, they're, they're traveling the streets. Yes, they're headed to a golf course, but they're still on our city streets, so something's going to have to be done with them, or else, unless we exempt golf course communities in an ordinance, Mr. City Councilman, Mr. Counselor, we're going to have to do something to permit them, because otherwise, you're going to have other people in the city saying, "Hey, if they can do it, why can't we do it?" Well, you're going to have to write that to make it permissible.
That can be done. I mean, I'm, I'm...
Well, wait a minute, wait now. So anyway, um, if you want to talk about safety, I was in Nashville last weekend, and there's these scooters, about the thrones of fifty at a time, sitting on every street corner, that you can slide your credit card in at all ages, as long as you've got daddy's credit card. You can get on a scooter and go through the middle of Nashville with all this traffic on a scooter, no helmet, no nothing, no rules, no laws. And they're doing it in Louisville, Kentucky, by the thousands every night, riding up down Chestnut, Forest Street, Main, and any age is doing it. So what we're saying here tonight is, we've got one person doing it presently with a golf cart, maybe another two or three, but I don't think it's going to be an onslaught of people buying these golf carts. They're going to be done by the law. If they're not done by the law, the policemen are going to fine you and cite you. So we're taking on this safety thing ourself, but if you want to talk safety, let's talk about the city of Louisville. I mean, there's city scooters all over that city, traveling on the busiest streets in Louisville, but yet, uh, the government's not saying it's not too safe or unsafe. They're saying it's something to do in the city. So we're worried about protecting someone's safety, but if it goes by these guidelines that they passed for all cities and counties in Kentucky, and you abide by those, what's the problem with it? We can give it a try. If it doesn't work, we can dis, disobey it. But if I want to ride up to the farmer's market, pick up some produce, ride back home, how do I have to get on a state highway? Don't have to burn up any fossil fuels put into the air, travel by electric. So are we trying to regulate something that I don't think's going to be a huge issue for people to meander throughout our cool town? We're going to build this downtown into a tourist idea? Maybe this will be a economic positive for our city. So that's my feeling on it. If nothing else, and it doesn't pass here tonight, or I don't get the consensus, which I'm not getting it, to move forward, any city council person, I think, can introduce it at any time, correct, Counselor? As a, uh, as a first reading, and introduce it, and see what, see how it falls out. So, uh, that's my, that's my feelings on it, and, uh, I don't think we're going to be overrun by golf carts in this city. They're too expensive. And Mr. Rankin, he's going to have to, uh, fix his golf cart where it meets the standards in the law. And I think he'd do that for us, as long as he could drive it legally. He's not going to break the law. I've known dip for a long time. Now, he's going to talk like he's going to break the law, but he knows who the law is. And I think he will abide by it. And anyone else will have to abide by it. The Anita, the lady in Anita Springs that's calling Stephanie, "Could I maybe ride to the farmer's market and pick up my produce?" I think she's going to abide by it. So that's sort of what, what I see about this issue.
I saw, you know, just sliced through Lesko.
You know, using, just to go across the street. And, I mean, you can tell that they're watching what they're doing. I was driving, and they stopped and waited till I went through. I mean, I don't think they were out of place. Pardon me?
They're supposed to.
Yeah. And they did. They were doing what they're supposed to do. You need somebody to sponsor it? I'll sponsor it.
We're not sponsoring anything tonight, we were just going to have a discussion. So, uh...
Okay, John, I got a question, Joe. If we say, bring this back to the committee to speak about it, do we have to assign the streets that they can go across, right?
Right. Yeah, each street.
I don't know if it'd be really the committee, I mean, that...
Be the council.
That might be something that the mayor would want to do. I don't know that we, I don't know if the city...
Probably be...
I don't know if committee would be...
Probably be beaching the mayor, I would...
I don't know if the committee would, just the three committees would be designating I don't know what the city, I don't know what committee would be.
Probably be beaching the mayor, I would.
I don't know if the committee would, just the three committees would be designating the streets. I think that'd be more of a...
City attorney.
Detective-type.
Exactly.
Decision, as far as that goes, and working, maybe the mayor working with Director of Public Works to do that. I don't, I don't...
Well, I'm not, I'm not a legislator, but I think you guys should have a hearing or a meeting, a public meeting, and have people show up. And then find out who wants these things, and then draft it that way. I mean, respond to what the people want, not what you want.
Exactly.
We don't know what they want.
Right.
I mean, if they want them in Crystal Lake, they can, you know, they can have them.
It's not the city.
It's not the city.
Okay, well, I guess that's a county problem then.
You know, the bottom line for it, I'm concerned, it doesn't make any difference to me, but this has got to be followed, regardless. I mean, I don't know what, they've got to have insurance. I don't know what, you talk about safety, and I don't know if the city would be responsible for anybody that's on a golf cart that got hit, because it'd be like, you know, I feel, I don't know, maybe the city attorney might hit on that. But I mean, as long as they got insurance, as long as this is followed. But if we do pass an ordinance, then this, I mean, I've got the county, I've got the county ordinance right here, and it is actually mirrored off of 189.286. It's got everything in it that this has, and of course, they've designated the streets. But...
Well...
I mean, it can't, if we pass an ordinance, this has got to be, this has got to be it. I mean, we can't just say, you know, let me or whoever's got a golf cart drive out the driveway with it and run down the street with it, unless it's inspected and everything's done according to 189.286.
Well, I personally, I think that, you know, maybe we should give it a try, because I've been here soon 65 years, and I'll be honest, I've seen DIP, Lesco...
Sure.
And Elsie Carter's. And I don't think we're going to have an overabundance out the road like that, so.
I don't... I don't, I don't, I don't think there's going to be, I think within the next two years, I don't think there's going to be jumped up, be 20 carts on city streets.
No.
I mean, I can't, I don't understand that, just by passing this, Will. Now, you know, and for us, and I do, we, you know, agree with, but it says right in here that they should be crossing that intersection. I mean, I don't, I don't even... I think where I read that, but it's...
You have to act like it's a car. You have to drive like it's a car, because you're on a road. I mean, you realize that. And you know you've got safety rules for a car, too, and things you have to do. So you follow, you follow the rules.
What's, council want to vote it up or down to move it off this table?
Does what?
Does the council want to vote it up or down to move it off this table tonight? Either way?
I don't, Mayor, I don't, I mean, I'm chairman of this committee, and I don't have...
What do you want to do, Chairman?
I don't have a problem with it at all, as long as this is followed.
Well, that's, that's the way it's going to be done. If it's done, if it's not followed, it's not going to be done.
Right. It's not going to be done, period. So, you know...
Safety first.
So what's your pleasure, Chairman of the committee?
I think we ought to give it a try.
And I'll second that.
Is that a motion, Chairman, to move it to committee?
Yes.
Committee's already heard it.
Committee's heard it.
Okay, so, so you're going to take it back up in committee and prepare to draft a first reading of ordinance, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can do that.
Anyone else have any final comments?
I would like, so, letter, let's see, number three, letter A, it does talk about there'll be a permit issued by local government. I would ask that, in your committee, that seems like there's a lot of fees and permits that we've passed over the last couple of years. I'd hope that that fee or permit would not really be anything, just because letter C says that the county's going to do the inspection. Now, it does say that local government does administer a permit. So I know that there is some, some work to do there, but I just would ask that you consider not applying a fee.
Trey, you can't, you can't go any less strict than what this says.
Correct, so...
It says in here that there's...
Hundred percent agree. So 3A says...
And the pervert, $5.
3A says, be issued a permit for the golf cart by the local government. So it doesn't say you can't charge a fee for that. Just says that...
Which one you reading, Trey?
3A.
3A?
It's the top of your second page. I agree with you that 3C says that the inspection...
Be issued a permit for the golf cart?
Mm-hmm.
By the local government?
3C does say about a $5 inspection fee. Can't be any higher than that. So I agree with you there. But A does not specify any kind of fee for the permit or issuance of a permit. It just says you'll issue a permit.
I think what the mayor's saying is, we just need, and he's just trying to get a straw poll as to whether there's enough support to send it, you know, to keep it in committee. So all this should be discussed in committee.
Hundred percent agree. He did ask if there were any other comments, and that's what my comment is, is to not, to consider not putting a fee on top of a permit issuance.
Okay, all right. But I don't think we have to take a vote on whether to send it to committee. It's in committee. It has been sent there by executive order.
The chairman has agreed to take it back to committee, but I wanted to see perhaps if any council person had any further comment before it moves back to committee. That's all I was looking for. And that was Trey's question, or his concern. Anyone else tonight? Okay. Okay, let's move on. I would like to pause on nine and 10, if I could, because I've held Jim Urban here all night long, and he just came here to speak to the council on one item. So I know he has to, he's got a bedtime. And so, so anyway, Jim Urban's with the planning and development office, and he wants to speak to you all about item 11. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate you moving me up. I could have stayed here a little longer. I was sleeping back there anyway. No, I'm kidding. Great discussion. Actually, what I'm here for is to have the city council consider approving the mayor to sign this agreement for consulting services between BTM Engineering and the city of La Grange and Oldham County Fiscal Court to complete the construction plans for Eden Parkway. And that is from the end of the asphalt area on Eden Parkway, the existing Eden Parkway, to La Grange Road. Now, if you've got the agreement for consultation services, you'll see item number four is a total compensation of $91,966. That's for the total contract. It's to be divided in half equally between the city of La Grange and Fiscal Court. And I'm on the agenda tomorrow at Fiscal Court to ask them to consider having Judge Vogel sign this contract. So each, the city will be only responsible for paying $45,983.
Jim, would you please give them, they've heard about this before, would you give us some history about the first phase of this, of this contract, and now we're entering into the second phase?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Of this, of the same road section?
Yep. The first phase was, we put out a request for qualifications and selected BTM to do Phase One, which was a preliminary line and grade. So getting, determining exactly how the road was going to connect from the end of Eden Parkway to La Grange Parkway. And from those, and there was surveying done, which included topography, and from, and meetings with utilities, as well as Olde and the city and the county. And we have an alignment now. And so the second phase, which is this part, is to actually do the construction documents, so we can put this out for bid.
Okay. Does everyone understand what Jim's asking for tonight? I'm sure, I guess. We're trying to continue Eden Parkway, short of the roundabout, we call it, in Oldham Reserve. And this road will extend all the way from the point where it ends, going up past Rawlings Company, to construct and define the construction plans to build the actual road. So this will be the final phase of the job prior to the actual constructing of that. To get us there with final construction plans, between the city and county, we're going to need $91,000. And to be split evenly between the city and the county. So that's basically what we're asking for tonight. So who would like to make a motion to approve this agreement for consulting services that Jim has presented here tonight? Anyone?
Mayor, as you well know, I've attended all the Olde meetings. Even since I hadn't been mayor, I've attended Olde meetings back, started in October of 2014. So I believe in everything that Olde's doing. They're doing a fantastic job. So with that being said, and what information Mr. Urban brings to them, this is, this is a great project for us to go in with the county to extend Eden Parkway. It will definitely help with Rawlings Company and the traffic, and so it's going to relieve a lot. So I will make the motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Davenport, seconded by former Mayor Carter. Any discussion on the motion before the council? If not, if there was a further motion, let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And you want to pause? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate it. Sorry to hold you here so long tonight.
Quite all right.
All right, buddy.
Thanks.
Okay, item nine, Ms. Sandy Fokes, La Grange, Main Street report. Welcome, Sandy.
Good evening, good evening. See, I'll talk louder now. You can hear me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Now you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to springboard off of what Mayor Black started talking about earlier, about some of the great events that are going on downtown. I'll start there, and I'll keep it short and sweet, I promise. Open classes for painting going on at Trackside Winery, and also at Everyone Can Paint, and at Preather Studio. So I'd encourage if anybody's got that artistic ability, or not so much like me, get in there, they'll work with you and turn you into a Picasso. Also, the Bluegrass Jam's happening at La Grange Coffee Roasters. We've got, of course, the farmer's market going on every Saturday morning from 8:00 to 1:00 on the Courthouse lawn. Our Trackside Tunes for August will be on the 16th, and that will be I Declare from 6:30 till 10:00. Of course, the Quads Car Show on August 24th. And there's a huge list of monthly activities going on at the History Center, too. Rather than list them all, I will just encourage you to go to the Oldham County Historical Society.org and check those out. I'm really excited. We'll do our monthly Main Street merchant meeting. Say that four times fast. That'll be this Wednesday, August 7th, at 8:00 a.m. in City Place. Invitations have been hand-delivered to merchants. They've also been sent via Facebook and email. So if anybody was missed in that, I'm going to knock on wood and hope that they haven't. But just to make that a record, everybody is absolutely invited, and we welcome everyone to come to that. Of a few of the marketing projects that we're working on right now, we have developed a new Main Street map with the current merchants, and they've all been printed. They'll be distributed this week. We've also redone our Spirit of La Grange ghost tour rack cards and posters. Those will go out this week to the merchants, hotels, and restaurants. So that's really exciting. I think that'll be fun. You'll probably see us around, too. We're going to do a test drive tomorrow night of the ghost tours. And we have our first group coming in Friday night for a special tour at 8:00, a group of 12 young ladies from Oldham County who are coming in. So that'll be really exciting. Also, I wanted to make you all aware of the Trackside Market we'll be holding on September 14th. Thanks to Jody Curry at Mercantile on Main, we currently have enough participants to fill Main Street and part of North Walnut. So if you know anyone who is interested in becoming a vendor, please contact Jody at Mercantile on Main, and she can work with you on that.
What is this Trackside Market supposed to actually have in terms of their booths that they're selling or renting? What are you supposed to have to offer?
Well, and I gave you all a little packet.
Okay.
They will have, if you take this and take a peek, they will have vintage antiques, vintage items. They'll also have repurposed and hand-created items.
Okay, do you have some of those give to the council people?
Yes, they're in the packets.
Okay, okay, good, okay.
Mm-hmm. So I gave those to everybody in the packets. They're also listed on Facebook. You can find all the information and the application for that will be on Mercantile's page, and also on the Main Street page for those. Also, we're doing ongoing work with Oldham County Chamber and Economic Development on business development and recruitment. And I think everybody knows Ernesto's is open, right? I think everybody has eaten there at least once. So that's really good news. Also, some exciting news, upstairs on Main Events will be opening, probably mid-September. So that's the building where Mike Preather is right now, upstairs. So that will be a special events and catering business. So real excited about that. And also, I think everybody, at least down where I'm at on Main, has seen the new Airbnb going in at 204 East Main. It looks so nice. If you haven't, drive by and look. They've got the door and the windows in, and it is going to be beautiful. So those are the new and exciting things, more obviously to come, right? More and more to come. Also, I just wanted to mention, too, that the La Grange Ghosters, we're still looking for two or three more guides for the season. So if you do know someone who is interested in being part of that program, please have them get in touch with us, and we'll get that going. A few things to share with our social media analytics. Our monthly page reach for the last 30 days was 38,900. That's up 185%. Yeah, I was really excited about that. And we have 158 new Facebook followers and 19 new Twitter followers. So I see lots of exciting things happening, and I'm just proud to be a part of it. So, any questions, anything I haven't told you?
This is nice, Sandy.
I'm keeping it. Isn't that nice?
This is great.
And it's all updated. The only thing that's missing there is 125, the upstairs main event. But we'll get that on the next round.
Would it be nice if you could take this, our city street grid system, and maybe place it as placemats at our local restaurants, and maybe so people could look at this, and maybe, once they finish eating, they could actually go outside of the local restaurant or venue and actually go walk to one of these places.
Maybe you are here? I like that. I like that. Very good.
I think that was done by Preather Design?
It was.
Mike Preather?
It was. There's also another version of it for the county that goes down farther on the highway. That's got more of the events and more of the hotels and things in it, too. So there's an expanded version that Kim does for the county. It is also distributed.
How far did it go south on 53 in terms of the buildings, south?
On ours?
Did it go as far as Shannon's Barbecue?
It does.
Okay, so it took it to Shannon's?
Yeah, it goes down.
And Q&amp;A suites, they get down there?
It does, absolutely. It does. We've got Dough Babies. It goes to Dough Babies.
Okay, good.
We go all the way down to Hometown Pizza.
Okay, great, great.
And then the other map, the extended map, if you will, goes, has that, and then it's extended down to the hotel section. So...
I was told that some of the local restaurants had some pretty good spinoff from the car show that was in Louisville this weekend. A lot of folks, some that stayed in the hotels, got back out here and then found a place to eat. One specifically was Shannon's Big R Barbecue. Lady that works at City Hall, she works there part-time, and she said she was there Saturday. It was a really big day for that. So maybe next year, we, as a city with our hotels, we could group them all together and maybe have some kind of entertainment for all the different hotels in one setting, where we have some bands or something, and maybe have a night of activity when those, all those car show enthusiasts come back to La Grange or something. So, you know, just be thinking. Okay. But this is a great report. Anyone have any questions or comments to Sandy at this time? Thank you so much, Sandy. Okay, your next item tonight is your financial report from La Grange Utilities. Mr. Ted Chisholm's here to answer anything for anyone about the utility operations. Ms. Carter, you're the representative from La Grange Utilities. Anything you'd like to bring to the council tonight about utilities themselves?
No, I think actually Ted's doing a pretty good job. I've got my eye on him at all times.
I've got my eye on him at all times, almost. But I think he is, and the interstate, he can deal with this better than I can because he's more into it, and he's been down there and seen it. But the interstate will be crossed in October. Come on, Ted. You're a bird.
The 71 Interstate Project was going at a great pace. We have hit a little bit of delay. We have run into a problem on the northbound lanes, on the casing pipe that was under it, wasn't to the old blueprint specs. So we've got a short delay there that we're working on trying to come up with an option to remedy that. Other than that, the, we would have been out there by October without any problem. Now it could be delayed a month or so due to that casing pipe, and we've got to look at their options on that at this time.
Use your whip, Ted.
Hmm?
Use your whip.
I'm trying to find some contractors.
I know.
Okay.
But it's progressing, which is the thing.
Questions for, anybody got about LaGrange?
The only question I would have tonight, Ted, would be the ladies that appeared earlier. Is there any relation to high water, a large amount of water in a certain area in regards to that third street sewer line going down through that might blow top off of a sewer manhole or something?
I've talked to the lady three or four times, and it's been about her water bill, not sewer. And the only thing that she said, the only thing on sewer that we've ever talked about and discussed is she said she had a gurgling in her house. And I said, "The gurgling in your house?" I don't know what a gurgling in your house is, but she says she smells sewer gas. Well, if you've got sewer gas on the top of every one of your house here, you've got a vent. What is that vent fault? For escape of sewer gas. That's all it's our fault. And I told her, if you think the sewage is going to back up, then you need to put in a backflow for venter, and then there's no way sewage can ever back up. It's, it's a very cheap fix. If I had a home that was on sewer, I'd have one in a heartbeat because it's a very cheap fix if you're in a low-line area where she's at. Then you can put this backflow venter on there, and it comes up and sewage hits it, and it cannot come back into your house. It stops at 100%. Airline is backing up, we have a problem at 71 Interstate that we're trying to correct right now. Airline never backs up to her location that I ever know of. And I've been out many nights chasing sewer, and the fourth I've ever seen it back up is Yager Avenue. And she lives on up past apartments on, on Third Street. Yes, I've talked to her, but it's been about a water bill two or three times. She was supposed to come and speak before our council two or three times, and never did show up.
Well, maybe she will now.
Any more questions?
No, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, item 12 is Major Bruce Goodflesh to come up and speak to the council about Resolution 2-219 with the Office of Homeland Security.
This resolution is an agreement between the City of LaGrange, the Mayor of LaGrange, and the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. It's a requirement for their grant monies application process. We get our body armor through grant monies through the Department of Homeland Security, and that's what this is authorizing us to do, to go forward with the grant process to get our officers' updated body armor.
Do they have one that covers your head?
Yeah, no.
I think they should have meant one, actually.
This body armor actually expires every five years, so we go through this every five years, roughly.
Okay, who would like to make a motion to approve this Resolution 2-219?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Trey Kammer, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Major. We have a Mayor Davenport, you will speak to item 13, introduction of the ordinance just for a first reading, and then let Counselor Craig Myle follow up.
Yes, I'd like to introduce the Ordinance 10-2019 for first reading of an ordinance to set a tax rate on real and personal property for the City of LaGrange.
Mayor, Counselor and I have discussed about the introduction of a ordinance at this meeting. It's, it's more or less a announcement, but Counselor says he sees no reason to actually have a motion tonight and a second. Know what you discussed with me this week, Counselor?
You don't do that till the second reading, anyway.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There's no motion.
But we need to, we need to give a briefing from, I guess, from Joe, our attorney here on what the actual ordinance says. If you could do an overview of that for the public tonight.
Right, there's no, there's no requirement for a motion to have the first reading, I just read it in, okay? And...
Basically, I'd like to say this before we begin on the discussion, the tax rate is set every year by the City of LaGrange, and we are setting the tax rate identically to what the rate presently is. I was told today by the city clerk that this tax rate has not been raised since 2008 or '09, correct, Stephanie? So we've left it identically the same at 20 cents per $100 of assessed value, and that's what this ordinance calls for. And the real property will be, what's the real, 26, is it 26?
20 cents per hundred.
26.5, that stays identically the same, so there will be no increase in the city property tax rate or the personal property as we sit here tonight and hear about the first reading of this ordinance for a public hearing next meeting.
Okay, so the first reading of the ordinance in summary is that this is an ordinance number 10-2019, an ordinance levying a general tax for the City of LaGrange, Kentucky. And the summary of it is that it's where it's necessary for the, for the City of LaGrange to obtain funds for the operation and maintenance of the city government, and to maintain the police protection for the residents, the welfare, public health, and safety of the residents. In pursuant to KRS 92, 280, and 281, and other laws, this ordinance sets an ad valorem tax rate of 20 cents per $100 worth of real property on property, real estate offices and homes in the City of LaGrange. That's the first reading and the summary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig Myle. There will be a public hearing and a second reading set for a public hearing at our September meeting. Okay, let's move on to item 14. And before we do that, Andrea Essen Price would like to speak to the community, the audience, and the council about her being a sponsor of this ordinance of a transient room tax. Go ahead, Ms. Essen Price.
Thank you, I'm, just to make sure I'm clear on everything, I'm going to read a prepared statement here. Thanks for the opportunity to introduce Ordinance 11-2019, creating the LaGrange Tourism and Convention Commission. As Chair of the Downtown Economic Development Committee, consisting of Bill Lamline, Leslie Wright, and myself, I feel strongly that the actions taken through approving this legislation could be dynamic step forward and creating new opportunities for tourism in LaGrange with a positive impact on our economy to be felt for years to come. Currently, a visitor staying in a LaGrange hotel would pay their room rate plus a 3% county tourism tax, as well as a 1% state room tax and 6% sales tax, adding 10% to their bill. The same visitor staying 15 minutes away in a Jefferson County hotel would pay 15 and a half percent, which includes an 8 and a half percent tax levied by Louisville Metro. This tax has been used to build tourism-related facilities such as the newly renovated Kentucky International Convention Center, as well as promote tourism activities in Louisville. All of the hotels in Oldham County are located within LaGrange city limits, yet the 3% county tourism tax is applied to promoting tourism activities all over the county. The Oldham County Tourism Commission determines how those funds are spent, which comes out to approximately $135,000 for this fiscal year. And Kim Buckler Hyde, Director of that Commission, does a great job promoting our fantastic county. The Economic Development Committee hopes that any newly formed city commission will work in close partnership with the county, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, to utilize all the resources we have to create and promote tourism-related activities and facilities in our community. At present, the 3% county room tax is not used for any bricks and mortar projects, whether in LaGrange or other parts of Oldham County. As per KRS 91A 390, a portion of the monies collected by a transient room tax may be used to finance the cost of acquisition, construction, operation, and maintenance of facilities useful in the attraction and promotion of tourist activities and convention business. One idea here is to stimulate the local economy with the creation of facilities like the amphitheater at LaGrange Springs. A project will have great benefit in attracting visitors to our town with concerts, festivals, and events. This transient room tax can also provide for the growth of our core downtown business district, so we can continue to attract visitors from surrounding regions. Ordinance 11-2019 would create an independent LaGrange Tourism Commission, made up of seven appointed members, three from the hotels, one from the restaurant industry, one from the Chamber of Commerce, and two members at large. This commission would decide on how a 3% city transient room tax could best be spent for the attraction and promotion of tourism-related activities and facilities in LaGrange, as per KRS 91A 350. Even with this additional 3% room tax, our local rate is still lower than that of Louisville and Cincinnati, continuing to make LaGrange an attractive option for I-71 travelers. We want to work with the hotels to fill rooms with visitors, and in the coming years, this could become even more critical with upcoming projects such as Oldham Reserve and the new off-ramps at Exit 20. Those visitors, even if they're only here overnight, are using city resources such as roads and police protection, and most would not balk at an additional couple dollars on their bill. Most of us are used to paying taxes and fees when we travel as part of our discretionary income. These transient room tax funds will only be utilized for tourism-related activities, not part of the general fund, and the commission will be registered through the Department of Local Government and annually audited. In short, I'm introducing and supporting this legislation, as I feel it is a great way to bring in an additional stream of revenue to the city, creating projects which benefit the community at large without additional tax burden on our residents or our businesses. I think the new LaGrange Tourism Commission, with representation from our hotels and restaurants, will work with our current resources and create and promote exciting opportunities in our city for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. And this, this ordinance already has been discussed in committee, correct?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has, okay.
Oh, the only thing I can really add to that, thank you very much, is to just formally read the title of this ordinance is simply the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, Ordinance Number 11, Series 2019, which is titled, "An Ordinance of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, Creating the LaGrange Tourist and Convention Commission." And a summary of that would be that it creates a tourist commission and convention, a tourist bureau sort of in a convention business, and would enact a 3% transient room tax or hotel tax for the money to be passed to the tourist, the tourist commission for expenditure.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll have a public hearing on that at our meeting in September, which will be held on September the 3rd. Okay, let's move to item 15. We have some number of different committees that are operating within the city. Does anyone, any one person chairing a committee have a committee report from their standing committee that they've met or would like to meet in the future? Trey, I'll begin with you, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So the Building Budget, Finance, and Utilities Committee met last month. I don't really have anything to significantly report, other than we'll have another meeting on Thursday, August 15th, at 5:00. And then I'm also the Chair of the Personnel, Finance, Boards, and Commissions Committee. We also met last month. I don't have anything significant to report from that committee at the moment, but we will meet on August 21st at 5:00, that's Wednesday.
Do you have any items already slated for either one of those committee meetings to be taken up that night, Trey?
As far as the Buildings and Budget, I guess, we have been talking about city-owned properties, so we will continue that discussion. And then the Personnel, Insurance Boards, and Commissions Committee, we have discussed the, I can't think of the acronym, but the International Property Maintenance Code, thank you. So we've had some really good discussion on that. We're going to look at some of our additional, our current ordinances that, that some form of that may replace. And then doing a little bit deeper, continuing our deeper dive into that document and exploring what we would like to do from that point.
Okay, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to report on any standing committee? Yes, ma'am?
I'll just pop in and say the Downtown Economic Development Committee did meet on July 18th. It was in largely in regard to the tourism ordinance that was just brought up for first reading. We met with David Bizanas from the Chamber of Commerce and Kim Buckler Hyde about potential pluses and minuses with this ordinance, and it was a great meeting with them. And I don't have another meeting of that committee currently scheduled with Bill being out. I will, at some point, get with him and Leslie, and if we have another issue, we'll bring it up. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much, Andrea. Anyone else for any committee, other than Mary, who chairs her committee by herself?
I was also going to mention that the LaGrange Springs Park Committee will be meeting this Friday at 8:30 at City Place.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, move on to 16. Mary, any, any update on LaGrange Historic District Guidelines Committee?
We were unable to meet last month because we didn't have enough to have a quorum, and this month with Bill being out, we went to wait, simply because we have one final piece and it's signs, and so that's something that he had a lot of input on. So we're going to, once he starts feeling better, hopefully figure out when we can meet with everyone, so we can finish that up.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary. Let's move to any unfinished business any council person would like to bring up at this time. Unfinished, that we've began and we'd like to finish it. Nothing? Okay, how about any new business anyone would like to bring to the table? That you feel needs to be mentioned tonight?
I think mine is mostly a question, and it's based on something that I read on Facebook today, so I guess I just want to get it out there for the public to know and to be discussed or clarified. So the new stoplights are going in at the four-way stop, and somebody had posted that they are going to have a flashing left turn and not a static left turn. And they were concerned that that would not really impact the, you know, the current issue at all. It's going to basically be another four-way stop kind of, kind of issue. Can you speak to that?
Not really. I think you're seeing a lot of flashing yellows. I know they're on 53 going south, and basically it doesn't hold you on a red, but if you think you can go left safely, you've still got that flashing yellow that you can legally do that. Far as how these lights are set up in downtown, I have no idea how they're going to interlock those with the railroad tracks. I've been told that this brain, brain here at 53 and 146, it's going to talk to every, every street light from here, south on 53. And by talking, when a train clears, it might decide to leave a lot of greens going south, you know? So it's very up-to-date, modern technology, and they're interlinking them even with the stoplights, saying, "What just happened in downtown LaGrange? We need to react to it down on South 53." So Andrea, to answer your question on the flashing yellow, I cannot answer that. They're working out there every day, and I assume those lights are going to be functioning pretty soon. And probably what they'll do before they actually activate them, they'll probably have reds going every which way for...
reds going every which way for a day or two, just for greens, I don't know what it would be, maybe reds, to get people acclimated to the fact that these lights are going to be working actually in the next days after that. So, okay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you heard anything more about the, from CSX, about the renovation of the track through downtown LaGrange?
No. Charles Deaton, as you all met the night at City Hall, he's, when we chose to not expend one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars to do what they would, hope we would have done, they decided there was more important work elsewhere in the system, and thus pushed this project back. And he told me that he'd give us the same heads up whenever they decided to come back to LaGrange, but I told him that one thing that we don't want to happen is to mess up our October, November, Christmas season with any of that. So, it's just one's guess as to when they may be back to LaGrange to even do the track replacement.
But if the track gets bad enough, we just call and complain to Jacksonville about it?
Yeah, just bad places along the rail, we can still do that every day.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment. So, the presentation that we were given about the crossing, that same crossing is, if you drive farther down, it's the 393 crossing. Right there, it's the same material where it had that bolted, the holes. So, if you want to see that example of, I guess, what was proposed to us, it's currently down there. I don't really know exactly how to, it's the 146 and 393.
Right.
Overcross. It's the exact same concrete panel that, right, that we were shown in his presentation.
Okay. Well, you all know where that type of panel is now, if you want to go take a look at it.
And if you go in other places across the state where they've been in for a long time, the concrete is disgusting. Now, whether they don't come back and pressure wash it, I doubt that they do, but it is very gross-looking.
Okay. Any further new business? If not, any council person would like to make any kind of announcement to the general public, you're welcome to do so at this time. Trey, start with you.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Mary? Leslie?
No comment.
Mayor Davenport?
No, for a second.
Elsie Carter?
Yes, I have a question about...
Speak into your microphone, please.
I have a question about the fact that one of the stores on Main Street has not been included in this little map in any place.
What store would you be talking about?
At 114 East Main Street.
Is that your building?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, there needs to...
But I think they've just forgotten it.
Okay, yeah, it needs to be a correction, and hopefully it can be planned into the map.
Okay, and when they do that, then we'll get more business.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, did they put the Matrix Metal Shop in there? Okay? They should have, I guess.
Yeah, it's, I don't...
Okay.
And she came in to see us. She's been in the store. She's doing a good job.
Okay. Is that your announcement? Andrea, anything tonight? Debbie Pollard?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, can I make a...
You go right ahead.
Okay. I just want to say I appreciate you. We kind of missed talking about the City Day thing, so I appreciate you coming up with that idea. I think all of us had a hand in making that happen, and Paper wrote a nice article on it, some photos. So, I think for the first time, it was a success. I don't know if you'd like to elaborate on it, but I appreciate the idea.
No, I just appreciate the council's help in you directing the fishing part of the event. I haven't gone to get my fishing pole yet, but I'm planning still on doing that because I enjoyed what I did that day. But it was a fun day. I think next year, if we have it again, it could be more advanced, advertised, and just try to, you start something and see where it goes, and maybe next year it could be more successful. But I certainly appreciate all the city council folks that took place, plus the Parks Board, Dr. Hazelton. Only thing I have tonight is, put this on Facebook today, but the pretty mural going on the wall down at the marathon, I think everyone's seeing that, getting a lot of compliments, positive compliments on this mural that Mike Prather's doing down there. So, he works on it before it gets too hot each day, and I think it's going to be a great entrance into our city and be recognizable by many people who come into the city that way. Otherwise, I have nothing else. Our next meeting's September the third, day after Labor Day. I wish everyone a great Labor Day weekend. And if nothing else to come for the council, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion made by Debbie Pollard, second by Trey Kammer. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much.
They grabbed that gavel down there, handed it back to me.
Ma'am? Ma'am? How are you?
Good. Be careful.
I'm not a big ego test.